Good evening. And welcome to the public hearing for the Livingston Zoning Board of Adjustment. Today is April 25th, 2026. If you're an applicant for a D or use variance, you should be aware that such a variance can only be granted after showing that special reasons for the grant of the variance exists and that variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the zoning plan of the township of Livingston. You should also be aware that in order to be granted such a variance, you will require an affirmative vote of five members of the seven-member Board of Adjustment. Other variance is required a majority of four members to grant that variance. If you're an applicant for any variance and your variance is denied by this board, you have a right to appeal to the Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days of notice of decision, and that court may overturn the decision of this board. If you're an objector to any type of variance that has been granted, you too may appeal to Superior Court of the State of New Jersey within 45 days and notice of decision. If you file an appeal, I ask that you please provide a copy of your complaint to the Planning Administrator Jackie Hollis. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger and West S. Tribune, and a copy was also posted on the bulletin board in municipal building. In addition to having notice posted, notice's meeting was placed on the township's website. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or to make statements regarding each application at the appropriate time. When the time comes, if you would like to address the board, please come to the front and use the microphone so we can make sure your comments or questions are part of the record. We will now call the roll. Ms. Khan?
Ms. Khan is here. Mr. Affronti?
Here.
Mr. Kenya?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Mirage?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Ms. Yuan?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
And Mr. Jemmas, our attorney is here, and Ms. Hollis from the Planning Board is here.
Thank you. Ms. Khan, will you call the first application?
Block 1101, Lot 22, 201, North Livingston Avenue. Application number 2023-52-V. Rodney Brown. Applicant seeks approval for a five-foot chain-link fence in violation of the following sections 170-91B2B and 3C, front-side yard-corner yard fence. Four feet allowed, five feet proposed, one foot variance requested.
Thank you. Welcome back. Before we get started, we have a few new members here, and I just want to make sure that everyone has reviewed the previous records. If you are new to this case...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, everyone has reviewed the previous testimony. Okay. Take it away.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, could you please both state your names and spell them, please?
Rodney Brown. R-O-D-N-E-Y-B-R-O-W-N.
Simone Anthony Brown.
Thank you very much. Do you both swear or affirm that all the statements and testimony you're going to give to the board today will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes.
Consider yourselves under oath. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, now take it away. Sorry.
So, I believe where we last left off was that we would get a new survey done, which we have done since that time. We had provided copies to the zoning office, I believe about a week ago. We also, based on the last recommendation, what was that? Our current fence was in the right-of-way. So, what, again, based on the new drawings, it was recommended, I think, that we go back at least three feet, but based on how our current trees are positioned, we were actually going to move it back eight feet to allow for the plantings that would go in front of the fence. So, the fence as its current position on the photos, I don't know if everyone has these? So, where that white line is now, which is actually where the fence would be moved back to, and then plantings, the plantings that are pictured on the right-hand side would actually go in front of the fence.
And there are three mature trees also which will be in front of the fence as well.
And those are being left in place?
Right.
Yes.
And can you describe the plantings?
So, we kind of took a look around the neighborhood just to see what is, other people are doing who have such fences, et cetera, and it seems to be that the forsythia plant seems to be pretty common for the area, so we're thinking that we're putting in a few of those, spreading them out accordingly because they do spread out and they grow six feet to nine feet from what we've been told. So, that is the ideal plant that we think might make sense there, and so I did give an example of it here.
Since I wasn't here the last time, I understand that you just replaced an old fence that came down at the same spot.
Right. Existing, the previous fence, there was some damage from our neighbor's tree that fell on it and severely damaged it, so we just replaced it for exactly what was there, just something bright and new and shiny. But, announced to us, we needed to have a permit for that, so we kind of did things in the opposite order. So, and we also didn't know that we could not have a chain-link fence, which was what was existing. So, that's why we're here to request a variance on that as well as the height.
So, you replaced the whole fence or just a piece of it that came apart?
The entire fence.
The entire fence.
We've been in the house for 24 years. I would guess that the fence was probably 10 years older.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And you're planning on moving the fence?
Yeah.
You just pick it up and put it back down and they'll reinstall it?
So, we only need to move that one side?
Yes, correct.
Right. So, yes, we spoke with the fencing company. They have agreed to do it at no charge for us to push it back eight feet.
So, that it is out of the right-of-way?
Right-of-way and clears those trees.
Yep. And you said you're going to put in the forsythias, forsythias, how many?
Ideally, I would assume six. I don't think more than six is required because of how it grows.
Okay. You'd be okay making that part of the resolution then?
Yeah.
That it was six?
Yep.
Anybody, any further questions?
I have one more question. So, before the tree hit the fence, the fence was already a chain-link fence?
It was already a chain. Yeah.
I appreciate the thought that you put into the plantings. I think it's going to look really nice, and I also appreciate the way you've moved the fence back eight feet, and I think it's going to look really nice that you mitigated the right-of-way issue. So, I would make a motion to approve this.
Got to ask the public first.
Okay.
Hold that thought. Does anyone in the public have any questions or comments for this witness? Anybody in the public want to make a statement? Anybody else want to make any statements before we...
I'll just make a quick statement. Thank you so much because when you came last time in front of the board, the situation arose, and we just really appreciate you taking the time to do this and moving the fence back even further and accommodating the town. So, thank you very much for doing this.
You're welcome.
I do want to add that I also commend the thoughtfulness of choosing the plant that is in the neighborhood, so it maintains some kind of uniformity in the neighborhood. So, it is a beautiful plant, but it is also, you said you looked around and that was seemed to be a popular plant in your neighborhood. So, I think that's very thoughtful of you. Thank you.
And the only thing that I will add is that I am happy that the fence company stepped up to fix the error because they were the ones who installed it and never should have been in the first place.
Yep. And I stress that point to him.
I have one little comment. I love that plant that you're going to plant too, but I just want to remind you, if it ever goes out too much into the sidewalk or block your point of view when you go out of a driveway, make sure you trim it.
Yeah, for sure.
But it's beautiful.
I think we're ready for a motion.
A motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr., oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Who seconded it? Mr. Kenya?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Affronti?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Yuan?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Khan, if you'll call the next application? A lot of pressure. Let's go. Come on, keep it moving. You gave me a deadline. I think you guys have matching suits. You work together a little too much, okay?
We do. I call him in the morning, he calls me, you know?
Block 1605, Lot 16, 25 Melrose Drive. Application number 2024-7-V. Infinity Holdings 8 LLC. Applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family dwelling in violation of the following section 170-87 CC4. Habitable floor ratio 30% allowed, 36% proposed, 6% variance requested.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matthew Posada. I'm from the law firm Sils, Cummins, and Gross, and as stated before, I represent the applicant, Infinity Holdings 8 LLC. The applicant is here tonight seeking D4 variance relief for the habitable-floor area ratio, specifically because the lot itself is actually undersized. Absent that and the ratio, there's no other variances that are being sought out before this board here tonight. Reason being is that the case law that governs ratio really just comes down to one question: Can the site accommodate it? And the way how you determine if the site can accommodate it is if it triggers any other variances and/or detriments to the public good. Well, we can validate right now that it doesn't require any other detriments as far as from a bulk standard, as the only relief we're seeking here is ratio, but as far as detriments to the public good, I will leave that to my planner. So, with that being said, I'd like to introduce my first and only witness that I have here tonight, Mr. Mike Lanza Fama, who is a licensed surveyor, engineer, and planner. So, we're qualifying him for all three.
This, I keep forgetting this. This evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes, I do. My name is Michael Lanza Fama. That's L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor, and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey &amp; Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey. I've testified before this board on numerous occasions on similar matters.
And are all your licenses still in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Terrific.
And Mr. Posada, are we qualifying Mr. Lanza Fama as a planner, engineer?
Yeah, planner and engineer, yes.
Okay. I would suggest, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objections. The witness is accepted as expert in, as a professional engineer and a professional planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I currently have up on the screen is the existing survey of the property that shows the location of the property, the location of the existing structure on the subject property. Excuse me. The property itself is 25 Melrose Drive here in Livingston, obviously, block 1605, Lot 16. It's located on the north side of Melrose Drive, approximately 100 feet east of Page Place. The existing lot has a frontage of approximately 85 feet and is somewhat irregular in shape as it narrows towards the rear and has a little angle in the rear line. The lot depth is approximately 129 feet. The property and the entire surrounding area are located in the R4 residential zone of the township. The existing lot has a land area of 8,962 square feet, which makes it slightly undersized for the zone, which requires 9,375 square feet. So, it's about 413 square feet below what is normally required in the R4 zone. The property was created as part of a major subdivision back in the early 1960s known as Crestview Section 5, and the house was built probably sometime in the early to mid 60s. It is a single-family, one-story ranch-style home. The project that we are proposing is to redevelop the property by taking down the existing structure and constructing a new two-and-a-half-story, single-family home, obviously on the same property, providing driveway access directly off of Melrose Drive. And the property itself and the development itself will be fully compliant with the zoning except for the habitable-floor area ratio. If you look at the zoning table that is depicted on the plan, you will see that, let me get this over, let me see if I can blow that up. So, you can see from the zoning table that is depicted on the plan that the side-yard setback is compliant, the rear yard setback is compliant, front yard meets the average, the combined side yard is compliant, as well as the building height is at 34.5 feet, where 35 is permitted, and the building coverage is actually below what is allowed. You're allowed to have about 2,164 square feet. We're at 1,906 square feet. The habitable-floor area maximum for the zone is 3220, and we're at 3217. So, the only variance we are seeking is for the habitable-floor area ratio, which the zone limits you to 0.3%, and we're at 0.36. So, the extent of the variance that we are seeking is about 528 square feet or 6%, 0.06 is the ratio. Now, what's important to understand with a floor-area ratio type of variance, the question that you have to ask yourself, can the property support the additional square footage that's being proposed as part of the application? And the way to determine that is to look at the other metrics that govern the zone, and that is the setback requirements, the building coverage, the height, and things of those sorts, because those are the true ways to determine whether or not this is going to have a negative impact on the adjoining properties. Now, we should note that the existing home is noncompliant currently with regard to both side-yard setback and combined yard setback. In the R4 zone, you're required to have a minimum of 10 feet for the side yard, and the combined side yard has to be 30% of the lot width. The existing structure on the west side is at 7.99 feet existing, and the combined side yard is only at 24.8%. The new house will actually be compliant, will achieve the 10-foot minimum setback, will achieve the 30% combined yard coverage that is required for the zone. So, just by looking at that aspect, there's definitely a benefit in granting the variance. The public, the adjoining property owners, are going to reap the benefit of additional light air and open space, which is an important element in zoning with regard to single-family homes and the development of any new home and new structure. What else is also important to bring out is, under your existing zoning, Section 170-87 DD-PRN-3-PRN states that in the R4 zone district, any addition or alteration of an existing single-family residential building that does not require a bulk variance may exceed the maximum habitable-floor area ratio as long as the maximum habitable-floor area of the entire structure is not exceeded. And that's exactly what we're doing here, is that we are not exceeding the maximum that's allowed, the 3220. We're not exceeding that. We're at 3217. So, that technically, if we were just to take the existing house and go vertical, we would not need a variance. We would not have to come to this board. But because we're taking down the house and constructing an entirely new structure, we then would need the variance. And what's important to consider as part of the overall development and consideration in developing properties such as this is aesthetics. How does this property work with regard to the neighborhood and work with the aesthetics? These are renderings prepared by our architect, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but it's important to show that the improvement to the property is a real benefit to both the neighborhood and to the community. When we look at the issues of, is this going to overcrowd the site? Is this going to have a negative impact? It's not like a standard use variance where we have to demonstrate that the site is particularly suited for this. This use is already permitted. The question is, will that additional square footage impact the adjoining properties negatively? And the negative criteria required under the municipal land use law is, we have to answer the question, would the granting of such a variance substantially, substantial, be a substantial detriment to the public good, and will it not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan? In my opinion, the answer is no. There's no detriment to the public good because the configuration and location of the dwelling ensures no degradation of the quality of air, light, open space enjoyed by the neighbors. As a matter of fact, it's increasing that setback that is currently noncompliant. The building coverages and all setbacks and heights are compliant. With regard to advancing certain elements of the purposes of the municipal land use law and the master plan, in my opinion, I believe that this structure, this improvement to the neighborhood would advance Goal A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of lands in a manner that will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. By providing a new home containing space and amenities that most home buyers in Livingston require in 2014, I believe we're achieving that. New construction and investment in the community has an overall positive impact on the neighbors. In my opinion, will also promotes I, which is a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. The aesthetic improvements, in my mind, are pretty evident when you look at the architect's rendering. When you look at your master plan, Section 2, under Policies, on page 6, the land use planning will provide for a variety of residential and nonresidential uses that will encourage continuation and enhancement of the township as a highly-desired, high-quality suburban residential community and will not negatively impact upon the aesthetics of the community. And in my mind, I believe that this application meets that goal of the master plan. So, in my mind, I can safely say, in my professional opinion, that this application, if it were granted, would not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. It would not be detrimental to the zone plan of the township or the master plan. And by citing the different sections of the ordinance and the master plan, I believe we've proved our case. So, again, the house itself is going to be a five-bedroom, six-bedroom home. It's going to have four bedrooms on the upper floor. It's going to have a guest bedroom on the first level, which would also allow for the homeowner to age in place. So, it gives that homeowner the ability, once he ages, to be able to live on the main level. And we also have a basement in the lower, excuse me, we have a bedroom in the lower level in the basement for possibly an nanny or a guest or someone that's visiting. So, again, I believe that the structure we're proposing is not going to have a negative impact on the neighborhood, especially in light of the fact that we're eliminating two existing nonconforming conditions on the property.
Mike, just a few questions for you. I believe you just answered one of them. Just to reiterate, this proposed application, which will demolish the existing single-family home, will also eliminate two existing variances on the site, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then hypothetically speaking, let's say if we were to keep the existing improvement and still develop this proposed single-family home, where we're still seeking a floor area of 3217 and a FAR of 36%, would we require relief from this board?
No, we would not.
I have no further questions for this witness.
One quick thing. We have to put that into...
I believe it was, Jackie, was it submitted or no?
I didn't see it.
I thought it was...
We don't seem to have it.
Let's answer that as A1.
Sure.
The code renderings.
There's four renderings in total.
Package of four. And we'll email those tomorrow.
And those were prepared, if I could, Mr. Chairman? And those were prepared by the architect?
The same architect, Hike Akashian. Thank you.
You want to flip through the four of them then, so we can see?
There's four in the exhibit. That's the front. This is a little bit of a night view with lights on in the house. Then another one at an angle looking at the front, and then looking at the east side, looking towards the structure.
Thank you.
Do you want to...
Mr. Posada, I want to make sure I understood the testimony. If the testimony is that in the R4 zone district, any addition or alteration of an existing single-family residential building that does not require a bulk variance may exceed the maximum habitable-floor area ratio as long as the maximum habitable-floor area of the entire structure is not exceeded?
Yes, that is correct. And ours is 3217.
I'll get you a copy of Ordinance Number 27-2023. That deleted it. But what I'm going to suggest, Mr. Lanza Fama, is that notwithstanding that, everything that you testified, it works here for that benefit.
Yes, I think it's clear...
I just wanted to make sure on the record that we didn't...
The elimination of the nonconformities, the fact that, you know, the house really fits into the...
I'm not...
We learned something from everything.
You were very, very good about explaining it. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have on the record something that perhaps has changed. All right?
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone on the board have any questions for this witness?
I have a question. In the material that we received, we only have the existing survey with the existing building. On the, like, back left side corner, the existing setback is like a seven-point-something feet. So, are you saying that it's going to be 10 feet with the new construction?
With the new construction, it'll be 10 feet. Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I truly appreciate that you are taking an existing nonconforming structure and constructing a conforming structure. I do appreciate that. My question is about the height of the attic. The roof looked rather pointy and tall. What is the height of the attic?
The height of the attic, I'd have to... The height of the attic, I'd have to look at the architectural plans and see if I can bring those up. Uh, it looks, it looks as though, he doesn't have, the architect doesn't have it actually dimensioned, um, but let me see if I can do some quick math here.
Looks about 11.6.
Yeah, you got, uh, 11.6, yeah. The, the floor of the attic is indicated at 20 feet and the ridge is at 31.6, so to the, to the cross members is probably around 10 feet or so, probably to the cross members. Um, but it is a, is a narrow area, and if you look at the floor plans, I don't believe there's any, um, access to that, that space, uh, like, there's no permanent staircase to there. Uh, let me, let me look at the, um.
And then obviously, there's no plan to put in a staircase either.
No.
No, there is no plans, no.
Thank you.
It's going to remain an attic.
So there will be no access to the attic?
Pull downstairs, but not actual walk upstairs.
Okay. Pull down.
Pull down, yes.
Okay.
But not permanent stairs to walk up, where it's, you could use it so-called as a flat on the attic space.
Yeah, that's the, uh, yeah, that's the, uh, that's the basement plan.
So I think as per our calculation, it's coming up to 11.6. That seems rather hu, very high for an attic. Typically, I think.
No, that, that's to the, that's from the floor of the, of the, uh, the attic to the very ridge of the point of the roof.
The very point, yeah, okay.
But it's a very, uh, steep slope on the roof, and then you have cross ties that are introduced to support the rafters, and those are going to drop down probably, you could have, in the very center, you probably could have eight feet clear.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, is there a reason why it's so steep?
It, it gives the house character. If you, if you flatten that roof, it's going to start to look squatty, and it really adds to the aesthetics to keep a, a, a roof trimmed like that with that kind of a steep slope. It really adds to the aesthetics.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public for this witness? Anybody in the public like to make a statement? Anybody on the board would like to make a statement? Anybody on the board would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Affronti?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you everyone for your time.
You're welcome. Take care.
Thank you.
Block 3100, lot 4, 13 Plymouth Drive, application number 2024-14-V, Leke Joni. Application seeks, applicant seeks approval to construct a new single-family dwelling in violation of the following section, 170-87BB4, habitable floor area 3220 square feet allowed, 3687 square feet proposed, 467 square feet requested.
Good evening. Now, for the record, my name is Stephen Sheppes. Nice to see you all again. May I be seated?
Please.
Okay, very good. Uh, well, uh, as the, uh, record was just read into, uh, into your hearing, we are seeking only one variance with regard to this application. Uh, unlike the application which you just heard moments ago, where you were dealing with a lot that was smaller than the ordinance required, our lot happens to be substantially larger than the R4 minimum requirements. Uh, the lot is approximately 75% larger than what the ordinance requires. Uh, we actually have the largest lot on the block. Uh, so without further ado, I'm going to ask that the, uh, project architect be sworn in, places credentials on the record, and briefly state for the, uh, board and the public the nature of the relief and justifications for it. Salute.
Do you swear or affirm that all the statements you're going to make to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete, including your testimony?
Yes.
Would you please state your name and then?
My name is Jonathan Babula, B-A-B-U-L-A. I am a licensed architect in New Jersey. I graduated from NGIT in 2004. I've been practicing architect, architecture for the past, uh, 20 years, and my license is in, uh, good standing and current. And I've testified before this board and, uh, about a dozen boards throughout Morris and Sussex and Bergen County.
Very good. I offer Mr. Babula as a licensed architect.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions or objections regarding this witness? There be no objection, the witness is accepted as an expert in architecture.
Very good. Mr. Babula, you prepared plans in conjunction with tonight's hearing, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And I believe your plans are up here on the large screen in the, uh, viewing publics?
Yes.
Okay, briefly, if you could, tell us a little bit about the size of the property and then what, what's there today and what you're proposing in the way of modifications.
So the, uh, property is 13 Plymouth Drive in Livingston, and, uh, it is a trapezoidal, irregular-shaped, uh, lot. It is about 88 feet by 130 feet, uh, but it does get wider towards the back. Uh, it is in the R4 zone. Uh, the required, uh, minimum lot area is 9,375 square feet. Our lot happens to be 16,432 square feet, so, uh, like, uh, Mr. Sheppes said, about 75% larger than what is required. Uh, the front yard setback is required to be 40 feet. We are proposing 44.4. The side yard setbacks are 10 feet required, and we're, uh, proposing 16.9 and 23.2. Rear yard required is 35, and our proposed is 58.2. The, uh, variance that we are seeking is for the maximum habitable floor, uh, ratio, uh, maximum habitable floor area, which is 3,220. Uh, we are going to construct a new single-family home, which is going to be 3,687 square feet, which is about 467 square feet over the requirement. The, uh, habitable floor area ratio, however, is allowed 30%. Um, the existing is 13.1, and our new building will be 22.4%. So we're still almost, uh, 7.5% under the ratio. Uh, the required, uh, building height is 35 feet. We are at 33, and the, uh, maximum building coverage is allowed 4,106, and we are at 2,288.
All right, Mr. Babula, can you tell the members of the board and the public what's on the property presently today?
So today presently is, um, is a rather outdated, uh, split-level dwelling, uh, that exists there now. Uh, it is, um, it had an addition out the back, and it is, it was built in the 1950s, and it's, it's kind of just, um, been outdated and tired-looking.
Mr. Babula, I have an exhibit I've marked, uh, as A1. I'd like you to take a look at A1. I'm going to hand out copies and board.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Babula, do you recognize what's depicted in the, uh, four photograph exhibit A1?
Yes, this is the existing dwelling as it exists, uh, today.
Okay, so let's talk about the dwelling as it exists today. Uh, any idea when it was built and the functionality of the structure?
I think it was built around the 1950s, and, uh, as I said, it's a, it's a split-level dwelling, which means, um, there is about three or four different levels, uh, three or four different staircases in the house, and, um, according to today's, um, habits and living area, uh, living spaces, it's, it's rather outdated and it doesn't function well in today's, uh, today's society.
So, Mr. Babula, why don't you?
If I can interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
On exhibit A1, can we just describe it? It's two pages with four photographs, and who took those photos? Do you know?
Uh, I believe, uh, yes, I did.
The applicant took the photo.
And, and, um, does it accurately depict what's there at the property?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Babula, why don't you show the board and the public what's proposed to replace the building that's shown on exhibit A1?
Uh, so on my, uh, sheet A2.0, this is our proposed, uh, new two-story, uh, single-family dwelling. Uh, it's, uh, more of a, uh, modern style. Uh, we're proposing, uh, you know, some hardy board, vertical siding with some stone accents, some, uh, metal roof, and, uh, a two-car garage on the right. Uh, side, uh, elevation here, you can see that there's part of a roof, um, on the back half because we are stepping in the, uh, second floor to keep the, um, floor area ratio as, uh, low as possible. Same thing in the rear, we do have a rear balcony that does not extend over the first floor, so that, you know, again, to keep down that, that, uh, habitable floor area. And then, uh, the last page here, we do have, um, some three-dimensional views of what the house will look like.
Okay, now, Mr. Babula, you had prepared an exhibit, uh, that you and I reviewed earlier about lot areas in the, on the block, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, how'd you prepare this thing?
Uh, I looked up the, uh, the tax maps, and from the tax maps, I, uh, scaled off and calculated all the, uh, square footages of the adjoining, uh, properties.
Okay, so may I have that? We'll, uh, hand it up as exhibit A2. And just as a spoiler alert, can you tell the members of the board what your ultimate findings were with regard to the subject property as it relates to the, uh, surrounding lots?
Uh, so our subject property is actually the largest lot on the block. It is, uh, 16,432 square feet. Uh, most of the other ones range anywhere from 11,500 to, uh, 14,000. So they are all, um, over the, um, required minimum lot area in this block.
Now, I also note that on your plan, you show that our property butts up against the, uh, larger zoned R3 district, is that fair to say?
Yes.
So the, kind of, where the brook is?
Correct, across from the brook. Yep.
Now, I had made a comment during our opening statement about our property being 75% larger than the minimum lot area for the zone, is that fair to say?
Yes.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Now, could you tell the members of the board, uh, what percentage above the, uh, the maximum floor area, 467 square feet, represents?
That's, uh, 14.5%.
Okay. So the lot is 75% larger than the minimum, but the proposed structure would be 14% larger than the floor area maximum permitted?
Correct.
So let's talk about the structure, why this additional floor area, how does that represent some type of, uh, benefit to the, uh, neighborhood, to the community, and further the purposes of, uh, zoning?
Uh, I think, uh, you know, it brings the, the structure to, up today's standards. Um, the floor plans are not here, but, uh, from my memory, you know, we do have a guest bedroom on the first floor behind the two-car garage, uh, which, again, you know, helps, uh, people to age in place, or they could use it as a home office, which many people are doing now post-COVID. And the second floor, we have four bedrooms, uh, with the master suite, and, um, we do have a full basement here as well. And so again, this, you know, this is what, um, this is more up to today's standards, and I think it really enhances, uh, the, the block and the neighborhood, and it, and it, it actually fits on this property as well. This property being the, the size that it is, um, it, the, the property can handle this.
All right, Mr. Babula, I have a last exhibit for you, exhibit A3. Uh, you and I discussed this earlier, you want to take a look at A3, or if you have a copy there.
Sure.
And tell us what A3 purports to be and how it may assist the board in rendering a determination.
Uh, sure, A3, it's, uh, it's an aerial photograph of the neighborhood. Um, the subject property, 13 Plymouth, is to the right, and, uh, you can see the other houses in the neighborhood, they're all, uh, split-level dwellings. Uh, what's important to note is about five houses down, all the way to the left, number five Plymouth. Um, that is a house there that is on, um, almost as large as a piece of property as our subject property, and that house there, uh, has a floor area of, uh, 3,600 square feet as well.
All right, so as everybody's just getting a copy of this, so we're going to take it a little slower, the, uh, subject property is all the way over to the right, as it's noted, 13 Plymouth, right?
Correct.
And all of these houses on our side of the street, back up to the canoe brook, which runs behind us, the wooded area behind us?
Yes.
And then you just mentioned that the house, which was, uh, a little over 3,600 square feet, is the one all the way over to the left at five Plymouth, is that fair to say?
Correct.
So is it fair to say that ours is the largest lot on the block that you could see here in this photograph?
Yes.
Okay. And it's your testimony that this house that you're proposing would not be out of character with the size of the houses or other houses on the block?
No, I don't, do not believe so.
Okay, I don't have anything further from Mr. Babula.
Mr. Shepherd, Sheppes, just for the record, it's four, exhibit A3 is four pages, two-color photographs, and then the assessment search and facts and features, just so the record clears.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody on the, uh, board have any questions for this witness?
I could make just an observation. So this is really more of an R3, like, typical of an R3 lot, correct?
You know, what's interesting is, uh, we're actually larger than the R3.
You're larger than the R3, right.
Yeah, it's still a little bit larger than R3.
We're kind of between R3 and R2.
Right, so the minimum lot area for an R3 is 15,000 square feet, so you're a little over 16,000. So your habitable floor ratio of 22.4 is sort of in line with what an R3 would be is 21%, if we were going to look at it that way, correct?
Yes, yes.
Even larger, because our.
Yeah, a little larger, yeah. Okay.
You know, it's an interesting thing, one time I heard a lawyer mention to the, a zoning board, says you're the zoning board of adjustment because sometimes the zoning needs an adjustment. And, uh, in this case, it's really true because the lot area on this property is kind of unique because it is the largest lot, and, uh, we are on the edge of the, uh, larger zone, and even there, we're larger. So, uh, clearly, as Mr. Babula had stated, that this is like a tailor-made suit because the, uh, property is so large in comparison to what the zoning ordinance, uh, requires, and likewise is larger than the adjoining zone. And I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we're up against the canoe brook, probably limited, uh, development and created larger lots, so.
Right.
It seems to be, uh, reasonable under the circumstances.
Right, okay.
I have a question. Can you please show, point us, um, to the, where the existing municipal easement is? I know in the review we said it, it will not be affected, but I'm just curious. Thank you.
Sure, on the, on the left side here, the existing survey, these dashed lines are the, uh, easement that is here, and in reference to the new area, it's actually on the opposite side because it's upside down, so it'd be to the right side of the property here, and we are, our structure is 23 feet away from, from the property line there, and that easement, I believe, is five feet.
Okay, thank you.
It's a storm pipe. A storm pipe.
Can you, can you comment on how this house will fit in with the street? I mean, obviously, you're the biggest lot, you're looking for a little bit bigger house, but some of the lots are smaller and some of the houses are smaller on that street. I don't want to see you get, you know, overwhelmed, so what's your opinion there?
Some, some of the existing splits that are there, they've had additions that have been put on, so, you know, really the only way to add on to a split is to go up above the kitchen, so you're kind of stacked up, so they look like, um, a back-and-forth kind of two-story house. So this is a more straight-up two-story house, but I, I think it still fits in.
I have one other question. On the renderings of the front elevation.
Mm-hmm.
Or front perspective, there's a window, kind of like up in the attic area. Um, is, I assume we're not planning on going up into the attic?
No, the, the attic will just be used for storage with the, so to pull downstairs. Uh, that window is really there just for, uh, decoration, just so it's not an empty, uh, siding.
Okay. Anybody else, any questions? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Anybody on the board would like to make a statement?
I guess I'll just say, I think this is a very obvious case of, uh, a lot that can, variance, so I'd like to move to approve it.
I second it.
Yep.
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you for your consideration, we appreciate it, have a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it on.
Block 6101, lot 21, 13 Volker Lane, application number 2024-12-V, Inga and Orielle Cohen. Applicant seeks approval for pool in violation of the following sections, 170-96A, 8A rear yard pool coverage, 10% allowed, 15% proposed, 5% variance requested, 170-96A. 170-96A8F left side yard setback, swimming pool, 20 feet required, 11 feet proposed, 9 feet variance requested. 170-6A8F right side yard setback, swimming pool, 20 feet required, 11 feet proposed, 9 feet variance requested.
Mr. Jemis, do you like to swear a minute?
Yes. I'm sorry, could you each say and spell your names, please?
Yes. Inga Cohen, I-N-G-A-C-O-H-E-N.
Yeah, Oriel Cohen, O-R-I-E-L-C-O-H-E-N.
Do you both solemnly swear or affirm that any statements that you make to the board this evening, including your testimony, will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes.
Consider yourselves under oath? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, take it away. Tell us what you got.
Okay, so we applied for the same variance three years ago. We got approved, and we did not know it has an expiration date. So we hired a contractor, we paid a deposit, we came to apply for permits, and we realized that we have to come again in front of the board. So we're asking for the same thing. We got approved, it was during COVID, and back then, when we wanted to do it, the prices were crazy expensive because everyone in Livingston wanted a backyard pool. So now we're able to afford it, and like I said, it's expired, so we're asking for exact same thing back then. We just got the pool approved without the kitchen, we're not asking for that. It's just to, I guess, copy whatever was in the prior resolution, which we submitted with the paperwork as well.
So there's no change, you're just looking for an extension?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any comments or questions?
I got a question. So the kitchen's out, I'm just...
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
I'm going to eat snacks instead.
Does anybody in the public have any questions? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, so previous application had the kitchen approved as well?
No, it wasn't. It's just still on the plans, we kind of submitted the same thing we had.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I do remember in 2020 December, there were 10 applications, nine for pools.
Four pools, yeah. Nobody wanted to go to the gym pool because of COVID.
Okay, would anybody like to make a statement? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Kenya? Ms. Connor?
Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
And Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Affronti?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
We'll be over in about a month and a half, you'll be ready?
It'll be three months, but you're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck. Would you like to call the last applicant? Best for last.
I like best. We won't tell the others.
Oh, sorry. Block 4304, Lot 3, 61 Irving Avenue, application number 2024-9-V. Karen Sunderum. Applicant seeks approval for second-floor addition in violation of the following sections. 170-99C3 side yard setback, 10 feet required, 6.5 feet proposed, 3.5 feet variance requested. 170-97C4 rear yard setback, 35 feet required, 34.8 feet proposed, .2 variance requested. 170-99C4 habitable floor ratio, 30% allowed, 44.1% proposed, 14.1% variance requested.
Thank you. Mr. Jemis, do you like to swear a minute?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you both please state your names and spell them, please?
My name is Arjuna Sunderum, A-R-J-U-N-A, last name Sunderum, S-U-N-D-E-R-A-M.
And I'm Karen Sunderum, K-A-R-E-N-S-U-N-D-E-R-A-M.
Do you both swear or affirm that any and all statements you make and testimony given to the board this evening will be true, accurate, and complete?
Yes.
I do.
Consider yourselves under oath, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, tell us your story.
Hi, our house is at 61 Irving Avenue. It is a lot that is 50 by 104, roughly 5,200 square feet. It is in a R4 residential district where the standard lot size is 75 by 125 with a minimum lot area of 9,375 square feet. We are seeking a variance for a rear yard setback, sorry, side yard setback and a habitable floor area ratio. What we're trying to build is a small two-story extension, about 9'4" by 14 feet, about 130 square feet per floor to just expand the kitchen and the master bedroom and bathroom and closet space. We have four children, so we love the area. We've been in Livingston for a long time, and it's just, you know, smaller. This is the minimum we could do to kind of make it work for us. As far as the benefit to the neighbors, the existing... in this area, there's an existing small patio, and there's a weird basement entrance that's akin to like what you see in the streets of New York City to go into the basement of restaurants, so it's really unsightly. We further... the architect has designed it in such a way that it's minimally visible from the street. In fact, we don't think it's visible at all from Irving Avenue, from the side street Hepworth, it is minimally visible from the rear. And that's pretty much it. We've... he's designed the plan to... in the extension space to make sure there are no windows on the... in the extension that are facing the side neighbor for privacy reasons for both parties. And there are no changes in the height of the building, the height of the house, or anything else like that. And in fact, we are in the R4 zone, the maximum square footage is 3,220 square feet, I believe, and, you know, even with this extension, we are 2,300 or so square feet.
Looks like 2,296.
Yeah. So...
If I could, in terms of what you submitted to the board, if my memory serves me correctly or if I calculate it right, these are eight photographs?
Correct.
Did you take those photographs?
Yes, I did.
Do those photographs accurately depict what they... what the images are on the property and the house? There was a survey prepared by Control Layouts, Greg A. Gaffney is the surveyor dated April 30th, 2021. Is that survey accurately depict what's existing at the property?
Yes.
Yeah, right. And finally, there are site plan documents that were prepared by Robert G. Emmert, E-M-E-R-T Architect, Inc., with a revision dated August 9, 2021, that consists of sheets Z1 to Z4, and the Control Layouts survey that we just discussed is in it. Does that accurately show what you're looking to do?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So you are essentially squaring off the house?
Yes.
So you're... are you going any further back?
No.
Or to the side than what's existing?
No.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I do.
Yeah, please.
I see one of the side yard setback is not 6.5, it's 6.4. In the back?
The side yard setback, the existing is 6.4, correct?
Okay.
And we're going to 6.5. I mean, my guess is that it's just a tolerance issue with, you know, in AutoCAD, a .1 difference. But it's essentially squaring the back of the property.
I don't know if we need to mark that off to 6.5.
Yeah, that's a good question.
If you look in the back, it's 6.4. It's not a big difference, but it's just correction. And the front is 6.5, and the back is 6.4.
I thought the only work that was going to be done was in the front of the house.
Yeah, it's in the front.
So there's no work. We propose in the rear.
It's only in the rear, sorry.
It's only in the rear.
It's only in the rear.
Right, right. Or nothing in the front.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And further, the one point I failed to mention was that the existing habitable floor area ratio is 39%, so it's merely a 5% increase about that.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
I don't know if it's just been a long day, but like, I'm not really clear, like, how is the rear setback even triggered if they're just kind of squaring off, like?
I think it's existing non... existing non-conforming?
Okay, okay, okay. So, all right, they're not really like changing the non-conformity much, just...
No, they're just... as I said, they're squaring it off, so. Anybody in the public have any questions? Not a lot of public left. Anybody want to make a statement?
I do.
Please.
I really appreciate that you just tried to square up the house, and being on an extremely small lot, I do see your hardship, but I think what you do here, in my opinion, is reasonable.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any statements?
Definitely a great improvement, I think, so it'd be good to the neighborhood. Thank you.
I'll concur with my fellow board members, just squaring it off is nice, and not trying to answer extra is appreciated. Anybody want to make a statement, make a motion, sorry?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Who'll second it?
Mr. Sherman.
Sherman, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Kenya? Much less scary than I thought.
We still got to vote, be careful.
I know, you do need like the gavel noise or something. I feel like...
Do you want the print?
Do you want to go through the...
We do have to vote.
Yeah, let's vote, please.
We do have to vote, so let's... okay, let's... Mr. Kenya?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Khan votes yes. Mr. Affronti?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Mirage?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that, I believe, is a wrap. There you go.
All talks about going through 11.